If I could have your attention, it is six o'clock by Clark Whitby's watch, so we will get started. So Ms. Whitby, if you'd call a roll, please.
Yes, sir. Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor is absent. Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Vouch?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
McCormick is present, sir.
Thank you. Please rise for the prayer and pledge by Alderman Baxter.
Pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We come before you humbly, asking for your continued blessings upon this great city, especially the employees who make this thing run. Bless, Lord, just as we make these decisions tonight, to just be with us and let us know that these things are pleasing in your eyes. Forgive us where we failed you, for we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
A blessed allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second. On the motion.
On the motion to approve the minutes, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's go into communications. Do you have any one more pulling any of the communications?
I'm going to accept and file 1 through 9.
Do I have a second? Whoa, whoa, whoa. Okay.
Pull 4.
Pull 4 and pull 5.
We need to say it.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, pulling 4 and 5. Ms. Whitby.
Okay, on the remainder of the communications, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number 4, do you want it by title or in its entirety?
Mr. Height? Number what in entirety? Number 4.
Yeah, please read the whole thing, please.
All members of the North Little Rock City Council, dear Alderman, as you are aware, in 2012, Arkansas voters approved a once-half-cent sales tax for a period of 10 years to finance street and highway improvements. A portion of the tax proceeds are allotted to cities and counties. This is the second year for this tax. I feel that it is imperative that we resurface as many of our arteries of, excuse me, major collector streets in the city as we can during the term of this special tax. The condition of the city materials in major collector streets have been evaluated by our engineering and street departments, and overlay priority is based on street conditions and traffic volume. Based on these criteria, the priority for the 2015 general overlay program is West McCain from Rich Road to JFK, and East McCain from JFK to North Hills. This will complete the McCain corridor resurfacing. Any appropriate funds for overland remaining after completion of this will be spent in accordance with the above stated criteria. In addition, I will be submitting legislation for your approval for the rebuilding of Main Street from Pershing Boulevard to 13th Street. This work is planned in two jobs. One would add a pedestrian refuge and enhance the street from 22nd Street to Pershing Boulevard to complement the new high school and improve safety for students crossing Main Street to the school parking lot. The second job is for 22nd Street to 13th Street. This work will be more extensive than most street overlays. Over the years, the crown of the street has grown, causing excessive cross grade for the traffic lanes. The street will be re-engineered to correct this problem. As always, I appreciate your support and value your input as we work together to move our city forward. Sincerely, Joey Smith, Mayor.
Mayor, before I make a motion that we accept and file, this is going to answer a lot of the questions that I've been getting in the last year or two about when are we going to resurface McCain Boulevard? And so this is a real blessing.
It'll start before we know it.
So now I'll move that we accept and file.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number 5, by title or in its entirety?
Please read that in.
Dear Mayor Smith and Bob, while late this afternoon, I rode the Fort Roots Highland Parameter Trail for the first time since completion of the trail whitening project. The formerly dangerously narrow section is now wide enough for bicyclists, joggers, and walkers to safely pace even if there are two trails users going side by side in opposite direction, and effect four sides by side total. Plus, the appearance of that section of the trail is greatly improved. I was surprised to find that the improvements to that section of the trail also significantly enhance the overall quality of the trail use experience from one end of the trail to the other. I predict that the improvements will substantially increase use of the trail. The quality of the work on the trail was excellent. I took some photos back of BACA, was sending announcement to the other completion of the project to the 1,000-plus people on the BACA email list, together with a before and after photo comparison. On behalf of myself, BACA, Central Arkansas bicyclists, and other trail users, thanks so much, Ken.
Mayor, before I make a motion that we accept and file, this, I just invite all the bikers that are using the trail in North Little Rock, that while half of our trail is flooded, I invite them to ride up Fort Roots Hill and check out our trail system up there on the top of the hill now. And that includes you, Alderman Baxter, too, so.
I was going to ask about the runners there, Alderman.
And I.
Well, certainly we have to give credit to Fort Roots for working with us on that. That was a joint project, so we do appreciate it.
Mayor, I move accept and file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes communications. Let's go into presentations. Target Architects is here, Bill Gray and Alan New are here. This kind of goes along with a contract I just passed out, interlocal agreement on this entire project, and we got it approved by all attorneys this afternoon at 5:00. So, Bill, show us exactly what's going to go on right there in front of the school on Main Street, and then if anybody's got any questions.
Okay, sounds great. I'll just let you know, we've got Alan New here, who's our lead designer, who's helped out with the aesthetic, aesthetic aspects of this project. And we have Brad Peterson of Crafton Toll, who's a civil engineer, who's done all the, really, the road work and the design work for the roads. So they can answer any questions also. Just quickly, what we have up here on the screen right now is the overall site plan of the high school. It's, it's, it might be a little hard to read, but you see the darker area is the new parking lot that has just been built. And then the street crossing will happen between the new parking lot and the high school. And that crossing is about 300 feet from 22nd Street, and it's probably about 600 feet to Pershing. So now we're going to close in on the design. I'm going to have Alan New kind of walk through this with us.
Okay. Feel free to interrupt us at any time if any questions. I think Bill or Brad and I could probably work our way through this. I'm going to step back just one more time here. I have a pointer. This is the main street corridor. This is 22nd Street. This is the area Bill was just responding, referring to, adjacent to the parking lot that the students are parking in now. The students will filter to a crosswalk area here and walk across. Then I'll go forward to the next slide. Any questions on this slide over here? Everyone knows where it is. So the parking lot is over here to the left. The students would filter from the parking lot to the crosswalk area, and they would filter across the street. It's a heavily trafficked street, and when we were approached by the city several months ago, we were asked to provide a safe place, but yet a place, a nodal place on the street, that we really wanted to make something significant happen that was worthy of the new school, which is so beautiful, and to kind of give an area of Main Street that is somewhat, it needs a little polishing up right at that point, and we thought that this crosswalk, what a great opportunity to do this. We have purchased two sculptures of Wildcats on rocks, the charging Wildcats, and we propose to place those on a pedestal on either side of the street. As you can see, that there's one here, and there's one right here. We're elevating them up so that they actually create a presence. You see them as you're approaching the intersection. We think that that, as well as, creates kind of a formal entry to Argenta and to the, and to the school district, that it gives the kids a sense of pride, and the fact that we elevated them up gets them, gets them, so gets them out of the way, makes it a little harder to, you still could paintball them, let's give it that. We're going to, we'll get a few of those probably, but.
At one time, we had those in the center of the median, but the problem with having them centered in the median was they kind of distracted from the vehicle or vehicle. And so we didn't want any vehicles not being able to see kids in the center of the pedestrian crossway, so that's why we moved them to the side.
That's a good point, and also just to further protect the children as they're walking across the street. There is a HAWKER light system, which is here, that as traffic approaches, it flashes, and then it turns yellow, and then red, and I think Brad could explain that in greater detail if you, if you had any questions about that. So it implies that it tells the traffic that they stop. The kids are escorted across the street, across the crosswalk with the crossing guards. There is an area of refuge here in the middle that's protected with bollards, heavy concrete bollards and heavy brick and concrete pavers that have planting in it with some, some nice low-maintenance plants. The lighting system, again, was a little atypical from the street standard. We wanted to create this as a true district, really wanted to make it special. Next slide, we hone in, this is.
Any questions? Hold on now.
Going back to the light system, you said it was going to be flashing yellow, which would turn to red, so this is going to allow progress for both pedestrians and traffic, because otherwise you're going to get a timeline in there where you're going to have a constant flow of students, and the traffic's going to.
Correct. And what it is, Alan mentioned, is called a HAWK system, which is a high intense, high-intensity actuated crosswalk. And so the pedestrians have control over when it's activated. I mean, the idea of having a crossguard or crosswalk, crossing guard staff, that location, would be that you'd queue several students at once, they would hit a button. It's, and it's not the same as just getting a red light and a walk symbol. It, as Alan indicated, kind of flashes yellow, it'll go to a solid red, so traffic will stop.
My concern was because of the Broadway Bridge construction, that's going to be one of the alternative routes, I think.
Well, that's just going to be for a while.
I mean, it's just for a while.
This crosswalk will be forever, so, you know, traffic gets straddled up a little bit, so be it. I'd rather the kids be safe.
And there's, I believe, plans to synchronize and queue with the light at 22nd and at Pershing, so you're going to have traffic stopping. And if this crosswalk turns red, it makes sense to turn those lights red also, so you don't have cars backing up across intersections. So they'll be synchronized where there'll be some gapping between traffic queues.
Thank you.
And there will be a crossing guard there also, so it's just not going to be kids coming up and hitting this button all the time.
So kids aren't coming through one at a time. They'll get 10 or 12, hit the button.
Chris and our traffic department's been involved heavily in this, and it's been a great team that's put this all together. Next slide.
View from the student's point of view as they're crossing the crossguard, crosswalk, you can see the planters that we just mentioned before, the brick that would match the former art center with a precast coping that matches the materials on the building as well. We really wanted to make this, again, a node that belonged part of the school, and also made something special for the city of North Little Rock. We're proposing banners on the light fixtures so that events coming up, that the school can, can re-banner those for, for plays, for homecoming, for whatever. So we, we think it's a very flexible design and very safe in that matter.
Okay, any questions? Ms. White?
The lighting along there, can you comment on what those lights are?
These, these lights are just a LED light that creates about, creates the foot candles that are, it's actually a greater foot candle amount, and I don't want to say the number, because I'll get it wrong, but it's, it's a greater foot candle amount than the city of Little Rock, city of North Little Rock has asked for, and we just think that, again, the safety and the uniqueness of this district.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one other question. Is there going to be water in those plant, for those planters?
No. Oh, it's irrigated. Yes, it's irrigated.
It's got irrigation in it?
Yes, but it's not a water feature.
Oh, no.
It's irrigated. And on the landscaping, our plan is to use very low kind of maintenance ground cover. There's some evergreen in there, like liriope, or maybe some junipers or something that, that won't take a lot of irrigation, but we're going to put just one hose coupler in there, really to get it established, and, I mean, after that, it shouldn't take a lot of irrigation, if any, to keep those plants alive.
Ms. Ross?
I think Alderman White and I are on the same page here. My question is, as far as the median, and I noticed that there was planting in the median also, planter, who maintains that? Is that the schools?
Yes.
Okay.
School district. We don't do that well.
That was my question, why I asked.
Ms. Robinson?
They mentioned some statues. Are these the bronze Wildcat?
Yes, ma'am.
Statues? Have we already purchased them?
I don't know if we've already purchased.
They're here?
They're here.
Yeah.
Mr. Billingsley, you had a.
Which probably has nothing to do with, you know, you guys, but Mr. Taylor spoke with me this morning, and one of the school district board members thanked him for the city purchasing these bronze, bronze Wildcat statues. And Mr. Taylor was not aware of us purchasing the statues, and neither was I. I didn't vote on them either, but that's why I was asking, are we referring to the same bronze statues?
Yes, ma'am, we are. Exactly. And, and we posted that on social media when they came in, and tonight's presentation was probably supposed to be a month or so ago, and it just took us this long to put it all together, so that was the reason for the delay, and you not knowing about the statues.
And this has nothing to do with you all, but Mr. City Attorney, during a previous administration, when I wanted to purchase some items for one of the neighborhood, it had to pass the test, and that test is if the, if the city would benefit. And so with these bronze statues, I'm just wondering how the city is benefiting. Now, I think the, I think the rendering that you have here is nice, but my question is how are we benefiting from the bronze statues?
Now, I can tell you, that was a question that I asked about the statues whenever I saw them on social media. One of the things that we sat down and talked about is that they're positioned in our right-of-way, that they're there and kind of act as guideposts, you know, for the area. So it's, is that sufficient consideration? I think that's a decision that's up to this council to make, if you feel like that's sufficient consideration for it. But I think that they do enhance the, the crosswalk on our property that identifies the area where students walk across. Whether that's appropriate or not is within your, within your determination.
Well, it's probably too late, because they've already been purchased.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, guys. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good night.
Okay, let's go into, are we ready for Randy? We have a 40-second video. Randy Naylor's here, who is, has led our cleanup charge every year for many years, and so we want to give him a boost tonight for this upcoming event. So Randy, if you want to explain what we're getting ready to watch.
Okay, we did, the city helped us do this short video to promote the cleanup, and we're just doing a last-minute call to anybody who wants to come out, sign a group up, and help keep the city clean, and hopefully it's something that people want to do all year, and not just once a year, and just take some pride in the city and just help us keep it clean.
Great. Let's watch the little video here real quick.
Trash sends a message this place that it's not worth caring about, but you can help your neighborhood, then start by helping us take care of your neighborhood. Sign yourself up or get a group together and join us for the Great North Little Rock Cleanup on May 16th. Families, churches, scouts, or just a couple of friends, everyone's welcome. Last year, your neighbors collected nearly 4,000 pounds of garbage in one day, and while they cleaned up their streets, they spent time with their neighbors. They had fun. They showed others their civic pride. This place does matter. This place is worth caring about.
That pretty much says it all, I think.
It does. We want to encourage everyone to get out and volunteer on, on Saturday. Randy, thank you once again for your leadership.
Okay, thank you, Alan.
Okay, next, we have public comment, sign-in sheet. It looks like most everybody's wanting to talk, all, everybody's wanting to talk on 01535, which is the legislation for the mobile home out east, that we incorrectly brought it up and voted on it last week, when they, actually, the notification was for this week. So what's the deal here?
When, when it was presented last week, the advertisements that, that are published to let people know when we're going to vote on a matter advertise this meeting, not the last meeting. So even though it was considered at the last meeting, there are probably interested people, and I guess if they've signed up here, that they want to express their position to be considered as part of that vote, and that's why I urge you to refile that matter, so it could be properly considered. We always want to give people due process, the, the ability to be heard before a decision's made, and, and that's why it's been resubmitted for your consideration.
Okay. All right, we'll just go down the list. I would like to encourage you to keep your comments to three minutes, and we'll start with Anna King. Ms. King?
Hello. This is regarding the property on 14024 Faulner Lake Road in North Little Rock, Arkansas 72117, and it's owned by Mr. Mark Pruitt. And he filed a date to, on January 27th this year, and the legal description of the lot is Lot 8, Saddlewood Acres subdivision. And he put an application for a special use to 778, number 778, to allow, allow a mobile home in that R2 zone, and I'm against it. My name is Anna King, and I'm really concerned, a concerned citizen, who urges our leaders of the North Little Rock City Council to act now to deny this petition or application for a special use of 778. Located at the 14024 Faulner Lake Road in North Little Rock, this property is located in a R2 zone. As a home and property owner, I'm very concerned at the potential of our property value to decrease. Mr. Pruitt wants to move a mobile home in the name property by changing the 2R zone. I, I'm against this. I don't think it should be changed, and I plead with you, City Council, to deny this request. Thank you.
I might, we are aware of this. We talked about it two weeks ago and voted on it two weeks ago, so certainly we want to hear your opinions, but you don't have to recap it, because we understand it. So with that, looks like we have Tanya? And Mark? Yeah, Tanya Pruitt and Mark Pruitt.
We originally put the trailer around the corner from where we're wanting to now, and they, we had the ground perked tested, and they said it was okay, and then come back where the city said it didn't perk right or something, which we found out that we could have got it perked right, but after, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
You're fine.
But by that time, we had already put the zoning in to move the trailer. It's just within a few feet around the corner on this lot that we bought from Danny, and he's here, and it's a nice trailer. And then we have other properties, too, and we don't, we don't just set them in there and make them look, make them look really nice and stuff.
Is this a rental?
It was for my daughter to live in.
She's here.
Okay.
And it's, it's not a small, little junky trailer. It's a really nice trailer. I have pictures of it if you guys have them.
Okay, thank you. Next is Helen Gaines.
Hello. My name's Helen Gaines, and I live at the, I live a house over from where the property lives, at 13918 Faulner Lake Road. I'm against this. It's a trailer that's going to be on the front of there of our neighborhood, which has been restricted. We don't want a trailer on the front. We've got back lots back there where they can put it. He has an acre. He can put the trailer right behind on his own acre, because he's got an acre there. We don't want any more renters out there that we've got. They've already brought our neighborhood down, and we're asking that you agree with what we're asking. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joanne Hicks. I live next door to the property, and I'm very much, very, very much against it. I'm very frightened at even the thought of this trailer going in and renters coming in and out. I'm sorry, I don't speak well. I just wanted you to know that I'm very much against it.
Thank you for spending your time to come up here tonight.
I'm Gary Hicks, and that was my mother that just spoke. We had this house ever since it was built back in the 60s. This community has always been zoned where they, you couldn't put trailers out on the front road. This gentleman has come into the neighborhood, and he's slapping refurbished trailers up all around the area, and we believe that it'll not only bring the property value down next to us and bring in, I firmly believe that he's not just going to put one trailer in there, he's going to put more than one trailer in there. It's also right across the street from the entrance of the new housing community, the stone links that they have out there, and I believe it's just going to bring down the property values of all the people out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary.
Yes, I just wanted to show Mark Pruitt his lot, because my mother's lot. I've lived out there longer than anybody in this room here. It's been mobile homes out there the entire time. His house, you know, he keeps yard mode, and one of the best houses in the neighborhood. You know, it's always been the county out there, and when my mother's house burnt, the city of North Little Rock come out there, but they wouldn't put a bit of water on it. It was county, so the house ended up burning, waiting on the county fire department to get there. You know, if they want to take over the county side, they already give us city services out there. But, you know, Mark, his house looks good or better than anyone out there. That's all I got to tell you.
Okay, Danny, thank you. All right, that's all that we have signed up. You know, it'd be all right if we wanted to go ahead and call that right now with any, any objections. Let's call 1535. Ms. Whitby?
This is an ordinance granting a special use to allow a mobile home in a R2 zone for certain real property located at 14024 Faulner Lake Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Maybe it's been the rules placed on second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
I'm against this.
We're suspending the rules.
Oh, yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
This is an ordinance granting a special use to allow a mobile home in a R2 zone for certain real property located at 14024 Faulner Lake. for certain real property located at fourteen oh two four Faulner Lake Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Second reading.
Who's been the rules and placed it on the third reading?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance granting a special use to allow a mobile home in a R two zone for certain real property located at fourteen oh two four Faulner Lake Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Third and final reading.
I have a question.
Question.
For the city attorney, is there any, this is exactly the same as the ordinance that we voted on two weeks ago, correct?
Yes, it is.
Word for word?
It is. It's the exact same one, and, you know, and we've met with the planning department because I think this is the second one that we've had come up in probably six months that we just got ahead of ourselves and got it filed too fast, put it in front of you before we should have, and it's properly before you at this meeting. All notice has been made. This is the right time to vote.
Thank you. About a motion?
I'm a.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
No.
White?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
No.
Vouch?
No.
Height?
No.
And Witcher?
No.
The motion failed.
Thank you very much, and thank all of you for coming down and spending your time and letting us know your opinion. All right, those that are leaving, please leave quietly. Thank you. Unfinished business?
Oh fifteen twenty-eight, Mayor Smith.
Please hold it.
Consent agenda?
All right, does anybody want to pull anything out of the consent agenda?
Our fifteen sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven?
Uh-huh.
Fifteen sixty-five.
Fifteen seventy.
So that's seventy, sixty-seven, and sixty-five?
If we do sixty-seven.
Yeah, let's just do them one at a time. Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir, our fifteen sixty-five, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution, reappointing Suzanne Clemens Jackson to the North Little Rock History Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Suzanne is here.
She's here.
Sandra, Suzanne, stand up with Sandra.
Aye.
Thank you. You have done a wonderful job. Y'all have worked really hard, and I know we're going to do the Heritage Center thing here just in a second, so let's go to the next one.
Our fifteen sixty-six, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Denise Hanson to the North Little Rock Historic District Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Our fifteen sixty-seven, Mayor Smith.
Yeah, I'm going to say thank you to Denise. She's not here, but thank you, Denise, for what you do. All right, go sixty-seven, please.
A resolution designating the facilities located at five oh six Main Street as the North Little Rock Heritage Center.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Suzanne, do you want to come up and tell us why we're doing this? I mean, I think it's an exciting change, and absolutely, come up.
Told me the other day she had a speech prepared for tonight.
Got to have to make that speech after all. Thank you, Council. Mayor Smith, we appreciate you having us before you tonight. As you know, about a year ago, we received the downstairs of the five oh six Main Street building for the use for the North Little Rock History Commission and North Little Rock Historic District Commission. And so, over the past year, we feel like we've been doing due diligence on the best usage for the building. One of the things that kept coming up in interviews with various city officials, preservationists around the city, was the fact that we needed a new name, that the North Little Rock History Commission did not invite tourists to come into the building. And so, the commission came up with the idea to rename it the North Little Rock Heritage Center, and we did have a tagline on that where the past is present. So we felt like that would be a venue for the building and for us to work with various agencies throughout the city and Little Rock and the state to bring in heritage tourism. So I'm going to turn it over to Sandra and let her finish up.
Well, just to be brief, we have some really exciting things to us anyway that are coming up. In June, we're opening an exhibit called Give My Regards to Broadway, and we're going to be featuring a collection of historic photos of the Broadway Bridge, drawings and, and images that we've received from various sources throughout the state. We also will showcase the current photographs of a photographer, a very talented photographer that lives in North Little Rock, Greg Davis. So, and later this summer, we're partnering with the Arkansas History Commission, and they are going to be debuting their World War One exhibit. We will follow up with an exhibit in the building until Christmas that talks about Fort Roots and Camp Robinson and Camp Pike. We have a very rich military history in the city that we want to talk about, so.
Well, y'all are doing wonderful, and we're really proud of the job you've done. And Suzanne, you've been our leader. Thank you so much.
Well, and I want to remind you all that on the second floor, we store a lot of our city records in their climate-controlled archive rooms, so we appreciate that, because we don't have room in our vault, so we appreciate that they take care of all of those records.
Do we have a motion?
One other thing, Mayor, neither one of them have mentioned that we also have a new, new sign for that, for that building. It's been designed. You don't, you don't have that with you tonight, do you?
We don't.
No, okay.
Get it to us, and we'll show everybody on Facebook and everything.
And one more thing that they might want to mention is they have a new nonprofit association associated with the commission now, so people can actually make donations to our city's history.
Great.
Under the name of the nonprofit. And you do have a motion.
I do have a motion. Ms. Ross?
Just one more thing too, Sandra, so you can explain how the two separate entities are working under this umbrella, the two?
Yes, we have two commissions that occupy the building. Our offices are upstairs. The North Little Rock History Commission, which is charged with keeping the history, the archives, collecting, studying the history of the entire city, and the Historic District Commission is charged with recognizing historic properties. We also review changes to the exterior of buildings in the Argenna Historic District, so.
Okay. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Our fifteen sixty-eight, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Thank you.
A resolution expressing support for the North Little Rock Fit-to-Be Employee Wellness Screening Infinity Program.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Our fifteen sixty-nine, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain city-owned items and certain accessories related thereto as surplus provided for auction thereof.
Move for adoption. Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Our fifteen seventy, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an informal interlocal agreement between the city of North Little Rock and North Little Rock School District for street improvements on Main Street at the new high school project area.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
Wait for a minute.
I question, I have a question regarding the agreement. It has not been signed, so are we sure that the district is going to go along with this?
Yes. Because we talked this afternoon about five o'clock, we drew up the contract. Their attorneys vetted it yesterday, Friday and Monday, and gave us the approval on, at five o'clock this afternoon. Thus, the reason that it was late getting out to you, so.
And my next question is, and I know that the city's estimated share is six hundred and one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Is that all we're going to be out of?
Well, we have a twenty percent contingency built into there, so we would like to think that our estimates are going to fit into that, yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Move to amend the agreement in.
Second.
Does this go with it too?
Okay, the maps that you're given, that you were distributed, is attachment one to the agreement.
Okay.
Okay? So that's all part of the agreement. Both of these documents constitute the agreement.
So we need two amendments?
No.
No, it's just one amendment, but both of these documents constitute Exhibit A to the resolution.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to amend?
Yes.
All right, on the motion.
On the motion to amend, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Move for adoption is amended.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson? I'm sorry, I'm, Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, new business, our fifteen seventy-one, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at eight twenty-two North D Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemn the said structures, providing a period of time for property owners to obey said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing on eight twenty-two North D Street. Anyone here to speak on eight twenty-two North D Street? Seeing none, close of public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher? Ordinances, oh fifteen thirty-six, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amended the non-uniform employees policy and procedure manu-, manual, first reading.
Move suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
How about a motion? Motion to adopt?
Right.
Ms. Ross, question?
You know, we talked about holding things, you know, and running things through on one night, and I didn't know, this may be something that we may want to hold just to see if we have any more input on that. You know, is there, is there any hurry to get this through tonight, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
This is on the smoking?
Yes.
It's on the smoking. I mean, certainly, we can hold it.
I just, I know that Alderman Witcher has talked about us, you know, running these through and holding things, and I just thought this is one thing, if anybody, because a lot of times, people don't see this until it's actually on there.
Yeah, I don't care. I mean, it's no, it, basically, it's just moving the smokers away from the front doors, isn't it what it does, Betty?
I know they've added e-cigarettes and a few other things into it too, though, but, so I didn't know.
There's been a lot of talk about whether or not employees can use e-cigarettes in the workplace, so we added e-cigarettes to be prohibited, and we also just updated the policy because it was out of date.
Okay. Y'all's call, if you want to call it. What do you?
Three times in a row.
I'm just asking.
Call it. Do we have a motion?
Must adopt.
In a second. In a second.
Second. What?
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh fifteen thirty-seven, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance adopted in Chapter Six on Floods, a flood damage prevention program as part of the North Little Rock Municipal Code repealing certain ordinances and code sections, first reading.
Move for the rules placed on second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance adopted in Chapter Six on Floods, a flood damage prevention program as part of the North Little Rock Municipal Code repealing certain ordinances and code sections, second reading.
Move suspend the rules placed on its third reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance adopted in Chapter Six on Floods, a flood damage prevention program as part of the North Little Rock Municipal Code repealing certain ordinances and code sections, third and final reading.
Mayor?
Yes.
You know, over the last couple of years, the Plasty County FEMA maps have been revised extensively, and they have added a great deal of area, particularly in North Little Rock, in floodplain areas, in, in connection with this, it kind of concerns me, you know, that we, again, as Ms. Ross said, you know, that we were running into this, this, this fast. Unless we have a compelling reason, those, those property owners that have not had an opportunity to look at electronic flood maps from FEMA and/or look at our set here, I would certainly like to have them to have that opportunity within the next week or so to do that.
I mean, I, I don't care. We've been working on this for four years, five years, so, yeah, I would guess that ninety-nine point nine percent of the property owners have been involved in this process, but if you'd like to hold it, just, is there a reason we have to do this tonight, Chris? All right, Ms. Ross?
I have an amendment for this on page one, one point, one point two B. There's a permit fee in there for cutting the seawall, the seawall. The permit fee, you know, this is all, is a hundred dollars. There's a lot of work that goes into this, and it's not something that we have a whole lot of, and talk to the city engineers, but if someone does want to cut into the seawall, which is very important to the city, there's a lot of regulations and there's a lot of, there's a lot of work for our engineering department, so I'd like to change that to a thousand dollars.
Problems with that?
Did you say one point, one point two?
Two, uh-huh, uh-huh, on page one.
I've got a motion to change that hundred to a thousand.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to amend?
Mm-hmm.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
How many times have we had a request? Two? In what period of time? 25 years.
Yep. I have another question.
Okay, we're going to hold that, Mary, is that what you want, Ms. Ross?
I have another question. Okay, where was I? I had a question here. Oh, this is for the city attorney or engineers. I know we're holding this for the neighbors. There's really nothing we can do when FEMA says this is the map, this is the map, because I know Alderman White and I, we've attended meetings, you know, on this in the past few years, and there's really nothing that we can, you know, FEMA tells you what to do. It's not that, and I have gotten maps for Dark Hall and some of the other areas to show them, it's the 500-year plane that they've changed the most.
Comments on that, Chris?
Just a little history short, I've been working on these maps for about 10 years. Essentially, the maps have been completed since around the '08-'09 timeframe. The reason for the delay has been more about our, the river certification of our levy. And so, we've been using the provisional maps, reviewing them along with the current maps all along for new development that is being developed in a floodplain, so, you know.
At some point in time in the next several years, we're going to have to come to you and ask you for a pretty sizable amount of money to fix the levy downtown and the pump system down there.
Yes, sir.
You know, we're going to maybe figure out how we can do it next year or the year after that. It's about half a million?
We're estimating about $350,000, and we're on the last stage of getting the North Little Rock Levy certified, and what FEMA is looking for is a commitment from the city that this maintenance item will be completed, because it was part of the documents for the levy certification done back in '09.
You know, while we're talking about that right now, the river's going to crest.
Wednesday morning is scheduled.
We've got some flooding already out at Burns Park across the trail. Our Parks Department is working on getting all that blocked off. We're going to shut down the Barron Cross Gate.
It is possible that the Barron Cross Pump Station will have to be operated. The gravity gates will be closed.
Okay, let's double check on that. Last time we did that, if you'll remember, it's when we got a rain on top of closing it, and it flooded at Benny Keith area right in through there, so let's make sure that everything's pumping.
Yeah, we're not going to close those gates.
Oh, we're not? Okay, good.
Not the ones that caused that, no.
Ms. Ross?
So, back to my original question, is there anything that a resident could do if their property is in the floodplain, other than can they go out and have some, they could raise the elevation of their property? I mean, by us holding?
Yes, yes, they can.
But that's, they could have done that before also, so.
I mean, the FEMA maps aren't perfect.
Right.
These are updated much better than the decade-old current maps, but if a person has a piece of property and they're, and that property is at a certain elevation and the finished floor is at a certain elevation, they can opt, they can have their structure removed from the FEMA insurance program if they meet certain things. So, there is an avenue for that.
Go ahead.
One more thing, will you just kind of explain the, because a lot of people don't understand the 100-year floodplain and the 500-year floodplain, the percentages and the every year?
Well, the 100-year flood event is the probability that this, say, the 100-year flood elevation has limits, and it's shown on the maps. It's the 1% percentage that that land will be flooded in that year.
Within that year, yeah, that's what everybody thinks, maybe once in 100 years, but it's per year.
And the floodway is basically, it's a little more complicated, but the floodway is basically FEMA's estimate of encroachment, you know, due to development. It's okay to develop in the floodplain if you do it properly and meeting their requirements. So, the floodway is defined as the area that you're kind of, between the floodplain and the floodway is where you can develop, and then the floodway is where you can, you should not develop unless you have what's called a no-rise certificate, which means you're not going to have anything hydrolically affected by your work.
Looking at the maps, I guess it seemed like that they had moved more property into the 500-year floodplain by looking at some of it, which is .2%, which is very
Right.
unlikely, but .2%.
But you do not have, if you're within that range, Zone X, you do not have to buy flood insurance.
Right.
If you're, it's only within the 100-year.
Ms. White?
Just one question, based on the comment about the river cresting on Wednesday, and just if people that might be listening to this broadcast, are there any neighborhoods or businesses that are of concern for Wednesday?
Are they aware?
Well, it's always a concern, it's always a concern when the river gets as high as it's planned to get. The normal pool, which is what the navigation is maintained at, is elevation 231. It's projected that the river is going to go up to 244, and we have several areas there are gravity-fed to the river, drain gravity-fed to the river, so those areas will have a tendency to back up water a little bit from the Arkansas River. And I guess there's a potential, if we got a large rain on the inside interior, that there might be a little bit more flooding, yes.
Ms. Robinson?
So, the people who live along Gribble, the homes along Gribble, they should be concerned about this? I think it's Gribble that backs up to the river.
Yes, ma'am.
So, should, should they be notified that the river's going to crest on Wednesday?
Might not be a bad idea, yeah.
I think they'll be fine. That area, you know, the last time it flooded down there, it flooded internally. You know? Yeah. But it wouldn't hurt. Hey, Dan, get with Chris and see if we might get a flyer out just to let those people in Gribble know. Are you going to close Redwood Tunnel?
No.
Yeah. When do they expect the crest? Tomorrow?
Wednesday.
Wednesday morning? Okay, any other comments? Ms. Ross?
Are we going to hold this?
Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't see any reason to hold it. Okay.
You don't see a reason to hold it?
No, no.
Mr. Witcher wants, I don't care, y'all, don't get me done.
He didn't want to hold mine, I don't want to hold his.
Somebody want to give me a motion?
At 2.
I thought we did.
Somebody want to adopt as amended?
Move for adoption as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On the motion?
On the motion to adopt as amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
No.
Did you say no?
No.
Okay. On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Includes new business?
All right, thanks, Chris. Ms. Robinson, you want to do public comments first?
I don't, I can go ahead, or you want me to?
Go ahead, I don't care.
I'm still back here at these bronze Wildcat statues, and I just feel like, since it was purchased with city money, that we should have been notified and should have been able to vote on it. I think Maurice was told they cost about $13,000, and so I just think that we should have been able to vote on that. And then, my second question about these bronze statues, since they're going to be outside, who's going to maintain them? I mean, you know, they have to be shined or something, don't they? Nothing? Okay.
I made that decision, I think I have that authority, and I made the decision to get them ordered because we had a very good price on them, and so if you're trying to get a rise out of me, I'm not going to let you.
Well, I'm not trying to get a rise out of you, Mayor, I'm just speaking that as an elected official here in the city, I would have loved to have been able to vote on it or to say something about it, but no, I have a right to my opinion.
I agree. Thank you for your opinion.
Welcome.
Public comments. Mr. Ard? Mr. Hyde?
Since, I want to make an announcement that my food truck committee is meeting tomorrow at 1:00, but in addition to that, do you think it would be a good idea, it's my, it's our plan to have legislation in front of you for approval for the next council meeting, would it be a bad idea or a good idea to go ahead and call for a public hearing at the next council meeting concerning that food truck matter?
Certainly can.
I'm going to do that now, rather than waiting till two weeks from now to call a public hearing.
Remember that, that meeting is going to be the day after Memorial Day, be on the 26th.
And the council did agree?
Yes.
By voice at the last meeting, just to be sure you knew that y'all all agreed.
Okay. Okay, thank you for chairing that. Mr. Hyde? Mr. Ard?
Thank you. I have a major complaint. On weekends, people sit up on church parking lots or wherever and sell their goods without permits, anything. And when I call the police department, they don't even want to issue them a ticket. And this weekend, when I called and reported one, the lady had answered the phone, says, "How do you know?" Well, number one, they don't have a previous license displayed, and I thought they had to have their badges, and Ms. Whitby informed me they didn't. But if you're not going to enforce it, I don't need to get a previous license this year, no more than I'm doing, and that's the way I feel about it. And if some of these other business people will come and complain, they shouldn't have to get one either. And if I'm not mistaken, code takes their trucks home on weekends, why aren't they subject to call if they take their vehicles home on weekends? I've talked to your office, Mayor, she's talked to Diane, and I'd like to see something done about this, and Diane reminded me you was going to get me a way to issue citations, like when I see sewer lines going in on weekends, roof, water lines, and businesses set up, but I bet you hadn't thought any more about it. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Ard.
You were going to get him a badge.
Yeah, I'm working on that. We're having a little bit of problems with the security clearance right now, so let me keep working on that.
Regarding what Mr. Ard said about the ID, the ID is for door-to-door solicitors or peddlers, and we have had a lot from AT&amp;T in the neighborhoods recently, and there are no licensed door-to-door solicitors in the city for AT&amp;T or anyone else.
And the news media never does get their permits and stuff like they're supposed to.
Excuse me, y'all. We have one more. You want to go now? Ms. Ross?
Did you have anyone else?
I've got one more.